Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, May 29, 2024. We have meeting and public comment announcements. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And for those joining us here at the table, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kell Smith. Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I'd like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Belsuver. And Yur Shalayem. Bayat Al Quds. These are the two national capitals of Palestine and Israel. For 10 years, I have maintained that the people of Palestine have a right to define their own statehood as we did, United States of America did in the late 1780s and 90s, as well as the people of Israel to define their own state. I agree with the ICJ's position on this. I have been in Israel. Perhaps some of you are familiar with this. This is a five shekalim note, which I used very often to get from where I was living on Benj V, in a rabbi's house, to go to the Central Zionist Archives, where I was working on the papers of Theodore Herschel, who is credited with having created what is now called political Zionism. Herschel wrote and thought in German. He was an Austrian Jew, who became, it became clear to him that it was necessary to create a state under which Jews could find refuge. And he wrote that in Der Judenstadt. He wrote another book that I found at the Central Zionist Archives called Alt Neuland, in which he worried that in solving the Jewish question, finding a place for refuge for Jews, that it would create an Arab question. I think that is exactly what has happened. I won the Israel Heritage Scholarship, sponsored by the University of Pittsburgh and the Israel Room, the Mellon Fellowship to go and do research for a doctorate on the formation of the State of Israel. As I said, I think that there are two states that the peoples have a right to do so regardless of whether the United States of America, or the United Nations, or anybody else can, can tell Israel or tell Palestine it should exist or not exist. I think that Herschel would find what is occurring in Gaza and in the West Bank, it would hurt him. His name meant heart. And I think it would break his heart that a conclusion of all of the effort has resulted in the atrocities that have taken place on both sides, but particularly over the last couple of months by the military of the State of Israel. And I think you need to take a position.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Thank you. You'll have three minutes.
Hello. My name's David Demko. I'm the Assistant Director of Scenic Pittsburgh. We're a nonprofit group dedicated to protecting and promoting scenic assets of Pittsburgh. I'm here in support of the resolution to declare Allegheny River Boulevard a scenic byway. A little bit of background on scenic byways. There's two official types of scenic byways, state Pennsylvania scenic byway and federal scenic byway. There's funding available for both of them. A scenic byway celebrates the, certainly the scenery, but the natural, historical, architectural, archaeological history of an area. The three important things about declaring a byway is, one, you recognize it as something important, something significant. Again, this is the stretch of road between Washington Boulevard and Penn Hills, Route 30. I'm sure you're familiar with Allegheny River Boulevard. What you'll notice is there were turnoffs along the, there's observation decks that are long gone over. And if you're as old as I am, and I know no one here is, you'll remember a time when you could pull off and have picnics in those areas. And they were closed off probably in the 1960s, but until that time, this Allegheny River Boulevard, which was built in 1934 in response to City Biddy's beautiful movement, was built as a scenic byway, as a roadway in which you could enjoy the scenic views of Allegheny River and, and have observation decks and access to the river. The goal is to restore it. It's one of the most endangered historical areas here in Pittsburgh. The important thing is, one, you recognize it as part of our history. Two, it creates a plan and narrative for which you to, plans future development and construction along of it. And third of all, it's a marketing tool. Scenic byways get a lot of visitors, tourism being one of the largest industries in the state. And even by conservative estimates, a byway brings in about 300, even the low performers bring in $300,000 per mile, per year on what they call heritage travelers. There's always been heritage travelers. You go to Gettysburg, you go to Leganier Museum, you're a heritage traveler. But again, this gives, this recognizes Allegheny River Boulevard as an historic scenic site. It needs a lot of work. The vegetation has gotten out of hand, but if you stare real hard at the river and you look past the vegetation, you'll see the views of the river are still there. So we think it's an important thing to designate. There's really no obligation other than being able to recognize it as a scenic byway. PennDOT and the state legislature will make sure that we follow the other requirements in order to meet the scenic byway designation rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. And our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee chaired by myself.
Deferred Papers, Bill 89, Resolution Amending Resolution 909 of 2023, titled Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for 2024 Pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code to Reduce the Cost of Employee Parking.
Motion, hold for two weeks?
A motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor of holding Bill 89 for two weeks, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A bill will be held. New Papers, Bill 501.
Bill 501, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Federal Bureau of Investigation in an Amount Not to Exceed $9,225.48 Over One Year in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to a Vehicle from an Accident with a City DPW Vehicle on March 4, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 501, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 502.
Bill 502, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Sakisha Morant in an Amount Not to Exceed $5,588.52 Over One Year in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to her Parked Vehicle from a City ES Vehicle on October 30, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 502, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 503.
Bill 503, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Three Warrants with a Total Sum of $280,000. It is further understood and agreed that the payment schedule of the total settlement amount shall be as follows. $150,000 payable to Lyndon McAfee and her attorney's Romanoff Law Group, $55,000 payable to Lyndon McAfee, executor of the estate of Clifford McAfee, and her attorney's Romanoff Law Group, and $75,000 payable to Diane Delaney and her attorney's Romanoff Law Group in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 503, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 504.
Bill 504, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with the law firm of Cozen O'Connor in connection with matters related to the Public Utility Commission at a cost not to exceed $150,000 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 504, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 5-
Madam Chair, can we read 511 and 512?
Certainly.
Bill 511, Resolution Transferring the Amount of $17.37 Within the 2024 Operating Budget from Council as a Body Supplies Postage to the Department of Finance Supplies Postage to Account for the Cost of Postage Meter Usage and Stamps for the Months of January Through April. And Bill 512, Resolution Transferring the Amount of $18,285.12 Within the 2024 Operating Budget from City Council Districts Supplies Postage to the Department of Finance Supplies Postage to Account for the Cost of Postage Meter Usage and Stamps for the Months of January Through April.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
The first bill covers the cost of the clerk's office, and the second bill covers the cost of councils' offices.
Very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 511 and 512, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation on both bills. That brings us to invoices. Do we have a motion on invoices?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. That moves us to... P cards. Do we have a motion on P cards?
So moved.
With discussion, second.
Second with discussion?
Yes.
Council President.
Motion to amend our P cards by adding the Mario Ashkar payment back to it. The, there's still an ongoing sort of audit of the P card system as a whole, but relative to this specific transaction, it was found to not be fraudulent at all. And so we're putting it back on so that we can ultimately pay that Bank of America.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? On this proposed amendment? So just to be clear, we have two different P cards before us. The amended one has Under Parks and Rec PayPal Princess Jaff, and then it's Farmers Market Coordination Efforts, April 2024, 40 hours, $1,200. So that would be amending it for, to include that.
Need a motion to amend?
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending the P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
P cards are amended. Do we have a motion to approve P cards?
We'll move.
Second.
Any discussion on P cards? I will just say that for our part, there has been an informal task force on the council side of the fifth floor that has had productive meetings, one with the mayor's administration and one with the controller's office. We will be reconvening to determine our own next steps and our own processes within the council, within city council, and will await further guidance and instruction and results of the controller's audit to make any formal process, changes to the code or changes to our rules. But there should be additional information to report soon from our, from the work of this informal task force. So with that, all those in favor of P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
P cards are approved. We have one no. Councilman Charland. Okay, thank you. P cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
New Papers, Bill 496, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a sole source commodities agreement or agreements with Teleflex LLC for the purchase of intraosseous needles and related supplies on an as-needed basis for a three-year term. A not-to-exceed value is not provided to the fund, to that funds are not encumbered unnecessarily and because demand is unpredictable.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
With discussion, Councilman Coghill.
I just have a few questions. I guess public safety is here. Thank you. Jeffrey. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. I didn't want you to come here for nothing, so you know, I thought we'd drag you up to the table. All right, all right. So as I read it, this is to supply syringes? Is that right? What's, what's the-
They're intraosseous needles, which it's a needle that'll go into the vein, I'm sorry, the bone of a leg or a shoulder to pass medications or fluids for critical patients.
Got it, got it. And we have like a shortage of them? We just always are needed, right?
Yeah. EMS uses a number of them every year. This is just to continue to purchase them?
Sounds like a life-saving product to me, so I'm a full support. I just didn't know if any other members had questions, but that's, that's really all for me. All right.
I wanted to thank you. We had had questions about this having a waiver and being a sole source purchase. And it sounds as if it is very, from the information you provided, I know Councilman Coghill's office, that this is a product that is, has good reason to be, to require a waiver for a contract.
Yeah, it's, it's part of the Pennsylvania Department of State protocols as far as treating. Again, it's usually the critical or the injured, medically and injured, but-
The reason it's a sole source is there's, one company has a patent on a device that allows it to be an electric drill rather than hand turning the needle into the bone. I know that sounds pretty gruesome, but that's, that's why this is much better.
At least you say it for the afternoon.
It's much better for the patients to have it done quickly. It's much less pain than the old-fashioned method of-
And part, part of the bonus with this, if we transport to certain hospitals within a city, if we, we'll get one for one. So if I would need it on Director Schmidt, and we took him to a local hospital, they'll actually give us one back. So we don't, it's actually not costing as much as it possibly could.
I wanted to thank you for providing those answers ahead of time so quickly, so, so that at least my questions were answered. So, thank you. Any further discussion?
Out of curiosity, so what type of injuries or afflictions, you know, require this type of intraosseous needle?
Any type of patients possibly entrapped in a vehicle, cardiac arrests unfortunately, where veins are very difficult to get truly anyone. It's having a, even it could be a heart attack that we can't get venous access. We can usually not miss a leg, a bone in a leg. So, sorry. I hope that answers without getting more in depth.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 496, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 497.
Bill 497, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the United States Department of Agriculture for Services relating to a Cooperative Wildlife Damage Management Program for Whitetail Deer for a sum not to exceed $98,839.11 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Brief discussion.
Brief discussion, Councilman Coghill.
Yep, thank you. So this is a grant, Director? Is this a grant?
No, this is us paying for services.
Oh, this is us paying for services. I didn't get that. What services are we paying for?
So this is a deer management program-
Right.
-that we did in Riverview and Frick Park last year. And we can bring up John Furman and Erica Hyde to discuss more with our park ranger team. This year, we are going to expand it out. We're going to do it in Riverview, Frick again, but also expand into Highland Park, Shenly, and Emerald View.
Interesting. So we pay federal government for that?
Yeah, USDA manages the training and the qualification program. And then this is a not-to-exceed, so it'll, it'll depend on how many hunters, how many deer we end up getting.
So, so the hunters are not paid, are they?
They are not.
Okay. But just setting up the perimeter and all the coordination, that's basically what we're paying for.
Yeah. Yeah, we allow the USDA to come in. They're the experts to do this. They set up the, the zones, the trainings, the qualifications, kind of manage the program to ensure it's done safely, properly.
Right. And Riverview has been successful.
Riverview and Frick were both very successful, yes.
And they supplied food, the venison for different food pantries or-
Yeah, so there was about 2,300 pounds of venison donated, which provides about 9,400 so meals for people.
Yeah.
We had a total of 59 deer donated, a total of 108 deer were harvested. So it was successful first year. We'd like to, as I said, expand it into the other three parks.
So the 59 donated were from the hunters themselves?
Yes.
Okay. They don't have to donate them though, so that's why we have a different number of those that were donated as to the 109 that were taken out.
Yeah, so their first one is required to be antlerless-
I remember that now, right.
And it has to be donated. After that, they're allowed to either donate or keep.
Got it, got it. Okay. Well, good. I'm glad to hear it was successful. I know I have them all over my district. I don't have a garden, so you know, it doesn't bother me as much, but I know people are trying to, you know, spend a lot of time trying to plant and grow flowers. It's very frustrating, but, okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, could we call up the park ranger team and Professor Weber to give us a little more detail? I know there was a study done, sort of what, what we achieved, and then also what the program is going to look like this coming year, this coming hunting season. So you can go ahead and introduce yourselves and then-
Hi, I'm Joan Farman. I'm the park ranger supervisor.
I'm Jeremy Weber, professor of environmental economics at the University of Pittsburgh.
I'm Erica Hyde. I'm the park ranger for Frick Park and the senior park ranger for the program.
I'm Tom Wilson. I'm a, I work for Wildlife Services, USDA.
So I guess, do you want to start just a little, just briefly, sort of the overall findings of the study?
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity. I'll just provide a few high-level takeaways from this past semester. Eight students and I at the Graduate School of Public and International Affairs focused on understanding this issue and first laying out what is the problem, what has been the problem. And we were, we were somewhat surprised that although we've been talking about deer for a long time, and it's been in the news, people complaining about deer for, for decades, literally, it has objectively grown worse as a problem. The number of deer picked up off of city streets increased from 140 in 2004 to 575 in 2023. So assuming that reflects primarily population growth, because the city's human population didn't grow during that time, that's a lot of deer and a lot of damage. We estimated based on insurance claims that those incidents, assuming each of those dead deer was a vehicle incident, which is very likely, and probably a lot more that didn't die and ran off and were not found. But just assuming that number of collisions would create about $3.6 million in damage for those individuals who were, who hit the deer. And that's going to fall more heavily on folks who only have liability coverage, low-income folks. So this is an issue that has gotten quite a bit worse, and it is causing substantial damages. I'll stop there, make sure that others have opportunity to comment. But those are just some high-level takeaways.
So I guess if you want to talk a little bit about what the program, so going forward, we did bow hunting with a small number of hunters in Frick Park and Riverview Park. And what is the plan then, moving forward for this coming hunting season?
Yeah, so we'll have an increased number of hunters in those five parks. I think we're doing 10 per park, correct? So a total of 50 in those five parks, 10 per park, or approximately. So there'll be another qualification period that will be opening up, actually, shortly, as soon as council gives approval. We'll be opening up the signups for that. Qualifications should start late June. And then qualify everyone, get them ready for hunting season, and then they'll follow the hunting season. There'll be assigned areas again, and we'll go from there.
Okay. And in the past, in the, this past season, so when we had it in Frick and in Riverview, were there any incidents reported, issues with the hunters or interactions with hunters and, and the public?
If I could take that. There were no incidents. We had no game violations. It was actually, I would say, a perfect season. We basically had, you know, we had some complaints, but as the, as the season progressed, we had less and less complaints. Because I think people got used to it, and they saw what was actually going on and how safe it was. So we basically didn't have any complaints. We, we might've had like one or two at the tail end of the season.
And then also I want to ask about, because my understanding is that in addition to expanding the bow hunting citywide, is this going to be in Hays Woods as well? It's not?
Not this season.
Okay, but maybe next?
Maybe next, yeah.
But that we will be piloting, so we'll be doing bow hunting in all the parks and then piloting sharpshooting in Riverview and Frick? Is that correct?
It's, if necessary, yes.
If, yeah, so I, because I'd heard it, so I don't, I don't know the details. So if you could clarify.
It will be based on, which we have not made the assessment of, the number of deer that we're looking to call this year. But based on that information and then how many hunters during the archery program get, how many they get, we will then make a determination with a program of controlled harvest through the USDA, which Tom could get into. It's, it is not anything like a standard hunter coming into a park. It is very much a managed hunt overseen. It is not just a single hunter even. It is a hunter, a spotter, and a driver going into the park after hours, so overnight when the park is closed. So there's no one there. And we would have signage up, but they also, like I said, Tom can explain it a little more, or Erica, how that would work. And we would only be doing that in, if we need to, would be piloting that in Riverview and Frick Park. This wouldn't actually happen until likely January of 2025.
So it would be like at the tail end of the season if we don't get the number of deer that we, do we know how many deer we're looking to get citywide based on?
Not yet. We're still working on getting some of those numbers. It'll depend on as we have some experts come in and review and, and see if there's a noticeable difference yet. But we probably are going, it will be likely that we would need to, if the hunters, unless the hunters do super well, we would likely need to do a small amount of controlled hunts at least.
So do you want it, would you mind, just because I know this will be of concern, like we're, we're going to hear about this piece of it. So could you explain just briefly again, first of all, the bow hunters, how they are chosen, you know, what the, what the criteria are? And then if we do, you know, and how that short controlled hunt with sharp- short controlled hunt with sharpshooters would work and how those hunters would be chosen?
Sure, um, so as far as the archery program goes, we put up a lottery system online, um, the general public can sign up, Allegheny County residents only, um, we put a preference towards Pittsburgh city residents. Um, we do a random lottery draw, a hundred names for our fifty archers. Um, fifty are gonna be archers and fifty are backup in case somebody drops out. Um, out of those hundred, we do background checks, make sure they have no game law violations, uh, or any violent crime violations, weapons violation, anything like that. Um, those ones that are left over go to a archery proficiency exam. That exam requires them to take three shots, unknown distances, they have to hit a small target, uh, six inches, about the kill size of a deer. If, as long as they qualify all that and they pass their background checks, they're in, we will assign them their areas. Um, I think the areas are about ten acres each, um, depends on the size of the park, um, and they stay within that area. Um, we try to keep them away from playgrounds, areas like that, anywhere that are sensitive, dog parks such as that. Um, at the end of the year, we'll go over the numbers, see how many deer are harvested, see the impact to each park. If we determine that we need additional deer to be removed, um, the USDA will come in. Uh, we do operations at night with suppressed rifles, um, so the sound is, we don't even set off the, uh, firearm sensors around the city with those suppressed rifles, they're quiet enough for that. But we work in three-man teams, we have a spotter, a driver and a shooter. Uh, the shooters highly qualified, they qualify every year, have to hit a one-inch target at a hundred yards, uh, multiple times. Um, they go through weapons proficiency, they go through safety, um, we do this a lot. But basically we drive around, we have set places, we shoot deer, um, we do bait them in with bait, um, to make sure they're in an area that's safe for a shot. Um, when we identify a deer that we want to be, take, uh, we will look around the surrounding area, make sure there's no people around, no other animals, any, anything we could possibly scare or shoot other than the deer. Um, when the shot's determined safe, we'll take the shot, um, clean up any spillage of blood, um, just make sure there's nothing identifiable that we shot a deer there, um, and then that deer does get donated.
So just to clarify, so those, the, so, you know, if, if we do end up doing, that will be USDA employees?
Yes, yes.
Doing that, okay, so it will not just be hunters, that will be employees, okay, and, and that will be done at night?
At night, yes.
At night?
And we, we use night vision and thermal imaging technology, so we're not riding around with big lights or anything, it's, for lack of a better word, covert.
Okay, I think that's all the questions I have, and could anyone else have?
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, ma'am chair, thanks for coming and, uh, just to, uh, just to go over some of the numbers that we had in Riverview and then Frick Park. Yeah, what are the numbers for?
So Frick Park had a total of sixty-seven deer harvested, um, thirty-one of those were donated, fifty-eight of those were doe, nine were bucks. Uh, Riverview had forty-one total, twenty-eight were donated, forty of those were doe, only one buck was taken from Riverview.
So how many are we looking to get up to?
Um, we're working to determine how many we will, uh, look to take this year, and then that will determine whether we do the, uh, sharpshooting or not.
What's the goal of the number?
The goal is, as, uh, the professor stated, we want to see a reduction in, uh, animal, or, you know, deer versus vehicle collisions, and then longer term would be the growth within the forest, that takes a little more time. I think our initial and quickest test is a matter of how many deer are being hit by vehicles to show the patterns of them running and.
Do we know how many deer are in Riverview Park?
I don't know if anybody here could make an estimate of that, I think it'd be challenging.
So all these populations of deer are migrant, there's nothing to hold them to a specific park, so they're coming in and out of neighborhoods. Um, generally you just want a lessening of the population within an area. And since we can't go into everybody's backyard and shoot deer, our public spaces are our biggest area to remove deer.
So what's a realistic number to get up to at Riverview? Like, we're just trying to shoot for the highest, I'm just trying to understand.
No, I, you probably have to remove quite a few deer. Uh, as, as Tom said, um, there's not a, we are accurate or really any consistent monitoring of the deer population in the city or in particular parks. A two thousand and ten assessment by the USDA, uh, estimated fifty to sixty deer in Frick Park, which is about a square mile. And as was reported, there were sixty-seven deer harvested by archery in Frick Park, so, um, and that was probably only a fifth of the population. So we went from fifty or so deer in two thousand and ten to probably, our analysis suggests between two and three hundred deer in two thousand and twenty-three.
At Frick?
In Frick Park.
Is it, what's a, like, will be a, uh, a number to get to for Frick?
That varies on carrying capacity, but numbers you see in the literature for a healthy forest, ten to twenty deer.
You said the ten to twenty deer?
Yeah, per square mile, which is about Frick Park's size.
Okay, so you, so I'm a little curious about this study, so you had a study done with some of your students?
Yes, uh, in my students, we, we drew from all the information that we could gather, um, which there's not a lot of great information about this topic, but we used two different methods to look at the population in Frick Park, one is to start with that baseline population of fifty or sixty deer, and then based on studies that have identified reproduction rates and fatality rates in similar contexts, what would we expect the population to be if it were unhunted in two thousand and twenty-three? And under some pretty normal scenarios, you're looking at two to three hundred deer. Likewise, we got sixty-seven deer in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, a similar archery hunt occurred in Fox Chapel when they started that program, and they did a population census, they harvested about a fifth of the population in the first year of the archery program. So if we just assume that we got a fifth of the deer, we're talking about a population that was in the several hundreds initially. So that, that was how we did our best estimate of about how many deer might have been in Frick Park before we started the archery program.
So what exactly were you measuring in this study?
Um, well, we measured, tried to measure impacts of deer.
Okay.
Uh, but also, uh, the deer population, um, because we were considering different options for managing deer. And it's hard to know if you're going to bring down the deer population, uh, sufficiently with a certain method if you don't know your baseline, and so that's why we did the population estimate.
Yeah.
And if you start with, let's say, two hundred and fifty deer, and you removed sixty or seventy, the remaining deer, given normal reproduction rates, is probably going to reproduce about the same number of deer you took. So about seventy deer, given reproduction rates. So that means unless the archery program is dramatically more successful, it's probably not bringing down the population enough to see some real decreases in those deer vehicle collisions, the garden impacts, and also of course, impacts on the regeneration of Shenley Park, Frick Park, uh, that is forest regeneration, that is, you know, saplings surviving beyond where the deer can eat.
So you're suggesting that we may not be hitting a number where it will be any sort of impact?
I'm suggesting we, we probably need Tom's services, that is, it's wonderful to rely and use recreational archers, that's like free labor, that's pretty low cost, really effective in a cost-effectiveness way, but getting to the point where you're going to uh, really reduce those deer vehicle collisions, really reduce deer in people's backyards, you're probably gonna need a far more targeted, um, and substantial reduction that usually only comes with sharpshooting that, that he described, which is, which is done in Mount Lebanon, it's done in Fox Chapel, it's done in Valley Forge Park, it's done in Rock Creek Park in DC, so this is not a unusual, as Tom said, this is, they do this a lot, it's not an unusual practice for urban suburban areas where the deer population has gotten to a point where archers are not going to be able to bring it back down to a sustainable level, and so you need at least, at least a one or several-time intervention before you can bring it down to where archery hunting might be able to then just maintain it.
And Tom, how many, um, you know, more deer would you be able to, um, what's the term to call, and?
Targeted harvest.
With the targeted harvest?
Uh, so with targeted removal, it all depends on if we see the deer, obviously. Um, sometimes we can take fifty at night, sometimes we take ten at night, it all depends on where the deer are at, how they're behaving, we try to target nights that are better for deer movement, so we're seeing more deer and removing more deer. Um, but I can't give you like a number per night, um, potentially we'd have room to shoot for ten nights, so if we used all ten, it would just depend on each night. About five per park probably, or.
So, uh, so some of the, I'm not sure if you covered this in your study, but, um, and by the way, is there a copy of it?
Yeah, I shared it with a gentleman from OMB who was going to, I think, disseminate it, uh, I think David was his name. And, and, and the rangers had it too, we.
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested to see.
We're in collaboration with them and.
One of the suggested things that the, you know, uh, culling the deer would, would help with would be, uh, the understory growth, which has been suggested that, that would help with landslides. Does that jive with anything that you're looking at?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to measure that, but, uh, deer impacts on vegetation are, are well documented, there's been kind of longitudinal studies of when you fence off an area from deer, what happens over just a few years, and it's quite dramatic. And so you can imagine if there's many deer, um, both browsing the vegetation and walking on the slopes, you're, you're leaving them bare, you're digging them up, and the basic, you know, prevention for landslides is to have roots holding things in place, and so, as you have deer eat the vegetation away and are scarring the hillside, um, you would expect the likelihood of a landslide to go up, and most of the wooded areas in the city of Pittsburgh are in those twenty-five, thirty percent slopes that are, that are high kind of vulnerability to landslide, so I think there is a connection, uh, but it's, it's hard to kind of quantify.
There's a wildlife expert that I spoke to one time that said that, because we were looking into this years ago about, you know, reasons that Riverview has so many landslides. And, uh, they said that the deer don't destroy the plant to where it would, um, ruin the root system. I'm not the expert, I was just, I don't know, is, is that something that you cover in your ex, in your expertise?
Well, I mean, I, I would, I would doubt that, given that deer eating the saplings prevents it from becoming a tree, so to the extent that it needs to grow uh, vertically and out for its roots to kind of penetrate and extend, I, I would expect there to be a connection there.
Yeah, I'm just curious, uh, as we move forward with this, because, you know, uh, Riverview has several landslides and whether it's deer or climate change, whatever, I mean, I'd just like to know.
Right.
So we can invest in that, um, so I don't really have a, you know, largely opinion about this and, you know, I'm not making the assumption that landslides are, like, we do this and then there's not gonna be any landslides, I'm really trying to understand um, that on a different level, but, uh, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Councilman Charlin.
All right, uh, thank you, I'll be pretty quick here, I just missed which parks were the right to, to be in this fall. Uh, I didn't touch it in the audio.
It'll be Riverview, Frick, Highland Park, Shenley Park and Emerald View.
Okay, uh, when you say Emerald View, are we counting McKinley Park in Emerald View now?
No, not right now.
Okay, uh, okay, thank you, and the other question I have is, or not even a question, just kind of statement, uh, there are folks that are doing some really great work in Southside Park, um, really trying to shine what was previously slacked up into, uh, uh, you know, like, what they expect to be a kind of regional treasure there. For those who haven't seen Southside Park and the work that, that Katie and friends of Southside Park have done, it's pretty fantastic. But they're desperately in need of some deer control there, um, they go through unbelievable amounts of effort to control, uh, or to, to stop the devastation from the area in that park. Uh, so if you're looking for future expansions, we would, would love to see, uh, we can safely do this in Southside Park as well, that's all.
Councilman, Council President Lavelle.
Thank you, um, is it Tom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I understand it was said in jest, but I do have a serious question. You had mentioned, you said, because we can't go into everyone, everyone's backyard and shoot a deer, is there a legal reason why you can't go into someone's backyard?
So, I mean, technically we could, um, each of those people would have to sign up, we'd have to vet each property to see if it's shootable, um, if it's a safe shot, there's backdrop, enough property around, no other houses in the background, stuff like that. It's possible, and I know they do it in other places, um, they put out a newsletter, the citizens sign up, they go vet them, vet the properties to see if it's, you're able to take deer there. On a, an area this, as big as the city of Pittsburgh, that's a lot of work, um, someone's gonna have to go out and vet each of those properties, et cetera, um, it is something you can do, yeah.
And, and how would some, and I'm asking this in all sincerity, because I, I live in, on the Hill District, and the street that I live on, almost every day there's ten to fifteen deer, and so we all very cautiously drive the street, because especially at night, they're in the middle of the street. And my, the residents have asked me, knowing that we're expanding the deer system, could they come into our area to potentially kill deer, I was like, I don't think they can, but you're telling me they can. If someone listening or a resident wanted to bring you in, what's the process?
Um.
Who they need, who they need to contact?
So, if, to be part of this program, we'd have to reroll this whole program, um, the funding's gonna go up. Because that's, that's a lot more additional work, um, if you're gonna start taking calls from citizens and
Gotcha.
Someone's gonna have to vet it and such, um, it's something we could look into if, like to, but it's a lot more hours, um.
Tom, could you explain the safety zone, like, how big of an area minimum would you need?
For targeted removal, there's no safety zone, that doesn't wall, it doesn't fit, um, generally you're looking at more than a half an acre for a property, um, to make it a safe, and it usually has to have a hill, has to be on a hill, so there has to be something to shoot into that's safe.
Okay, and what's, what's sort of the cost associated with that? Like, if we as a city said, because there are park pockets of our city that sit in neighborhoods, that sit in very dense, um, weeded, tree areas, if we were to say, yes, we've identified ten areas where we think this would make some sense, what would sort of additional costs be for the city?
I wouldn't be able to give you that number, it would all depend on how many deer, how many hours, what kind of back, backwork would go into it, legwork would go into it.
Okay, um, second question, and it's, it's a tag along question. Is there evidence, because you also mentioned that deers are transitionary, right, they don't, they're not staying in any one place, but is there any evidence that by culling the deer in the parks, by even expanding the culling into now five parks, that we're, also, we are seeing deer come out of residential neighborhoods? Is there, is there any evidence to that? I'm just curious.
Well, I live near Shenley Park and the deer have not been as bad this year, but that's just one yard, and my guess is that if you did a systematic kind of assessment across gardens in near Frick, um, you're probably not yet seeing much, just because we're starting at such a high level.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I do also want to point out that with substantial removal of deer in those five parks, even if there isn't removal happening in the Hills District, it won't hurt that in other areas of the city, the deer population is going down a lot because they do move, so there would, I would expect to be some spillover if you're having substantial removal in these other parks.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, any further discussion first round? Um, second, we'll get you Councilman Coghill for second round, any further discussion first round? Okay, second round, uh, Councilperson Warwick followed by Councilman Coghill.
Yeah, I had the same question, actually.
Good job.
Um, so the deer wouldn't tend to stay in the parks, I mean, I would assume they would, but maybe they have gotten to know the flowers and now they know that the yards have nice flowers, I don't know. So, okay, so, so we can't, that, that, that is not necessarily the case, that. So, okay, so, so we can't, that, that, that is not necessarily the case, that they're gonna stay in the parks. I mean, would they, it would seem, if I were a deer, I would want to be in the park and not out in the street, but I don't know. We, we can't say. Okay.
To deer edge habitat, uh, professionalists, they like that transition between two habitats. So the transition between a park and a backyard, or a park in a more suburban, urban area, is their sweet spot.
What, do we know why that is?
Uh, just availability of food and cover. Um, there's, they get all of that right there, and they don't have to go very far. So traditionally, if they're gonna eat in a field, like in the natural woods, if they're gonna eat in a field and then bed in thick cover, they might have to travel a long distance. But if they can sleep in your backyard safely and eat your flowers, and it's all right there, or go into the park and eat acorns, and then go to your backyard and eat flowers, and then sleep in your backyard, um, it's all real close together. So they like that edge habitat between two habitats.
And we can say, I know we were talking about the understory a little earlier, that our understory in Pittsburgh is basically nonexistent. What is there is invasive species, it's deer, deer resistant species, and even that, we're starting to see them munch on. So when food becomes scarce in the park, they're gonna start moving into your backyards, in your gardens, whatnot. I live right in, beside Frick Park, and, you know, we have a whole family of deer that just lay in our backyard. Um, but as food sources become scarce, they will travel. They're smart, adaptable animals to find their own food. So this is just one step into, you know, re, rehabbing our parks, um, to build up our understory.
Um, I did want to, and I just quickly, and maybe this is for Director Schmidt, I, because I, in, in the Thirty First Ward, specifically in, uh, New Homestead, there's a lot of clandestine hunting that goes on around. And I just, just for the public, and, you know, hopefully this, when the articles come out, this would be nice to have included, what, you know, can you just clarify the rules, which are that you, about not hunting in and around people's homes and whatnot, here in Pittsburgh, generally, just for the public at large, outside of this program?
In general, you are not authorized to hunt in our parks. And then private properties, there are requirements by the Game Commission as to safety zones, depending on what type of weapon you're using, whether it's a rifle, well, you can't use a rifle in Allegheny County, but a shotgun or archery. Um, for the most part, there's very limited areas of the city that could have hunting in those are not public areas, sands, haze. But otherwise, you're not allowed to hunt in the city. That is all enforced, however, by the Game Commission. Our police will let people know they're not allowed to, but game laws are enforced by the Pennsylvania Game Commission, not the city of Pittsburgh.
Okay, so if someone is, just because I, I've had residents ask me this, if someone is hunting in proximity to your house, what should you do?
You should, if it feels too close, you should call 911. The police can come, they can talk to the person. If they feel it's significant enough, then they can refer it to the Game Commission for a further review and fines, et cetera, but...
Okay, so rule of thumb, if there's someone hunting, you know...
Just be aware, they could, there are large swaths of privately owned property that is allowed to be hunted on. We don't have control of that. If you own, you know, a few acres somewhere in the city, and you allow people to hunt on that, that is permissible.
And what is the distance if, uh, from a home? I guess, yeah.
Uh, so for archery, it's fifty yards from an inhabited building.
Okay.
And, uh, with a firearm, it's a hundred and fifty yards from an inhabited building.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's not so far. So if someone is hunting, and it feels like it's in your backyard, and you don't want it to be, they should call 911 and, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Professor, you brought up some good points, and I will tell you, as somebody who grew up inside the city limits in Beachview, I was a hunter when I was, you know, young, twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old, so we used to have to travel two and a half hours north to see a deer, I will tell you. There were no deer running around in the city of Pittsburgh. I'm fifty-eight, so, you know, we're going back, I am getting old, I know, forty-five years ago or so, there was not a deer to be found. My brothers and I, we knew deer tracks, and I remember once in a while, we'd see a pair of tracks, and it was like big and exciting, right? Today, I mean, they're living, I'm feeding them out of my hand in my backyard, right? And I live on a very busy road. I don't live near a park or, you know, a greenway of any sort, so the population has definitely increased, whatever you said, fivefold at least, at least. So, uh, they're walking right up in the middle, and they're walking through McDonald's drive through, honest to God, they're unbelievable, they're everywhere. So my, my question, though, is, do you have, in your study, did you have statistics as to, um, I know you say, uh, property damage to vehicles, but what about this past, however many years, or what you looked at, as far as injuries related to deaths, vehicle, vehicular accidents? I know Mount Lebanon, there was a big cause, you know, Washington Road, they were jumping out and, you know, causing major accidents, and people were getting killed. Do you have statistics on any of that in the city of Pittsburgh, or no?
Unfortunately, not. The, the PennDOT does keep some data on accidents involving deer, um, but it turns out, and we looked at the data that they had for the city of Pittsburgh, um, for the kind of thresholds for which, and places where they get involved, um, they're really not, their data does not really capture that. I know there, there have been fatalities involving deer, but, um, their data are too incomplete, um, and the city itself doesn't track, you know, if these carcasses picked up, any, any additional information surrounding that event. So we really don't know.
Right. Yeah, besides all the underlying issues, um, that we all discussed here at the table, vehicular accidents, the amount of damages that have been done to, especially somebody with, like you said, just getting a liability, you know, it's a major, major cost, and we all see the damage they, they can do. Um, what, let me ask you this, Professor, maybe you're not the right person to ask, but what, why do you feel the increase has occurred over the past thirty years in suburbs, in inner cities? Is it, is it building outside the city that's forcing them out of their woods, or is it they just find, you know, these wonderful gardens with, uh, you know, all, everything they, all they can eat, basically? Um, what, do you have any reasoning behind that in your study, that you...
Yeah, well, I'm curious, maybe Ranger Hyde has additional information, but historically, Pennsylvania went through a period where the deer population was nearly decimated. And then it faced a rebound in mid-century, um, as forests grew back, provided excellent habitat, and so you did see populations explode across the state and rural areas in seventies and eighties. Um, my, my best guess would be, you know, the urban areas are simply kind of late to that game, um, and, uh, so it's somewhat of the outgrowth of the historic kind of environmental use across the state, um, but others might have comments.
I would say, we have a couple factors at play. One, we're losing hunters each year. Um, each year, we lose hunters as a county, state, nationwide, and Tom might have more info on that, but we're also losing green space. You know, we are, you know, as the city becomes more and more populated, there's less room for these deer. And then as a whole, they're just feeling pressured as a population. Ninety-eight percent of deer reproduce their first deer at six months, and we, that's why we see that double in population every two to three years. So if we don't have an archery program, if we don't have any sort of deer management plan in place, they're gonna continue to grow until some, something steps in to control the population, rather it be a deer management program, rather it be an apex predator that gets brought in, you know, disease, famine, whatnot. Uh, so I think it's just, in general, a population dynamic as deer as a whole, and then also the fact that we're losing green space, we're losing hunters, we're, you know, losing those opportunities to hunt.
Combination of a lot of things, it sounds like. And, uh, to what, to what you're saying, um, you know, first of all, uh, you know, all the underlying issues that, uh, you know, they're, they do, they create problems when they're overpopulated. But, um, and from what I understand, we are keeping up with it, we're not, it's gonna maintain the same being that their, you know, birth rate is, but with the archery, we can at least keep it at an even keel. And then we could bring Tom and USDA in if we so choose to really make an impact, right? And, and, and Tom, thanks for, first of all, it was good to hear the discretion that goes into picking, picking the archery hunters, I will tell you. I didn't know how that went about, but to know that they're put through tests and, you know, have to make shots, it's, it's very important. When they call you in for the nighttime, uh, calling, uh, you use rifles?
Yes, we do use rifles.
High-powered rifles?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and you can probably take out in one night, how many deer?
Potentially fifty, but it all depends on...
I was gonna say, right, I mean, you're baiting them?
Yes.
They're coming in, and it's, uh, you know, rather than over a four or five day process with fifty archery hunters, you get the same impact in probably a couple hours.
An eight-hour period.
Right, right. So if we really wanted to trim the herd, we bring you in, and we do, as you suggest.
Yeah.
All of that's donated?
Yes, all of that's donated, all of the hardest, targeted harvests.
And I trust you when you tell me they're put through a rigor mortis, you know, qualifications, especially when you, yeah, it's not a right word, rigorous.
Rigor mortis might be the right word.
Yeah, right, right, right. But that they're highly professional, and, you know, you've not had any accidents in the past as to stray bullet.
No, not, not in this issue.
Okay, uh, that's it for me. Thanks for being here, appreciate the wealth of knowledge you gave us today on the deer calling.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kiel Smith.
No rigor mortis sitting in over here. Anyway.
Rigorous, I guess.
Rigorous, rigorous. Anyway, I just, I, I appreciate that, um, the administration and others have worked on this. I think it's something that we, they've been asking for in my district for a long time. They do it without permission, to be honest with you, in a lot of my neighborhoods, but I will just say. But, um, I, it, one of the things, I did talk to, uh, someone in my district who brought it up, is maybe teaching kids how to also hunt, and to do some things, and to take some kids on some, some programs where, you know, they get to fish, but they also get to hunt, and if that's something that people can teach the kids to do, and maybe you could work with Cornell Jones on some of that stuff to combine the efforts. That's all I just want to say. It'd be a way to teach kids in a, in a positive way how to do some of the things that they like to do, or, or understand. So I know they do it in other places, I just want us to look into that somehow. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I know that looks, everybody's looking at me like I'm crazy, but it's okay for crazy adults to have guns, but not normal kids, and when they're impressionable, we can train them right.
Council President Lavelle.
Thank you. Very briefly, are you able to post no hunting signs? I will follow up with you.
Can you enforce them?
Game Commission has to enforce them.
Right, but will they enforce them in the city of Pittsburgh?
Yeah, they will enforce them.
I know, we were always told that they wouldn't enforce them. I'm sorry. We were told that they won't enforce them because the state law allows it in the parks. So legally, they can, they won't enforce their, their own law against, something against their own laws, is what they do.
It's mostly a matter of bandwidth. I think there are, what, two?
Game three, yeah.
Maybe three. In Allegheny County?
One's in my district.
Yeah. Uh, but, so as part of this, we do have to post all of our parks, no hunting, which means only authorized folks can hunt in them. Um, so we do have to enforce that with them.
I just want to make, be clear, please shut up, because now we're gonna be taking guns into the park. Okay, I'm gonna shut up.
Just, just to follow up, um, last year, some of the hunters ventured away from River View into what's considered the Perry South Greenway, and there were a number of instances where the police were called. And the hunters, you know, they apologized, they didn't know the boundaries and where they couldn't, could not necessarily go. And so when the police showed up on a number of occasions, they said they couldn't post the no hunting signs, um, and they sort of indicated to us that there was nothing officially on our books, in the city's books, that say you weren't supposed to hunt there. So we were going to legislate no hunting in the Perry South Greenway, assuming that if we did that, that then you could post, and then our police can enforce that. And am I accurate in assuming that?
Yeah, I mean, we would have to post it regardless of the most our police could do would get them for trespassing, but that's a little harder to do, you know, on a greenway. They can't enforce, our police cannot write someone for hunting in an unauthorized space. Um, the Game Commission has to do that.
But we can get them for trespassing if we legislate it that they're not supposed to be here.
Yes. Yeah, but I believe there's already legislation that there's no hunting in our parks.
There is.
Magistrate, you know, we also have to have proper notice and signage, so that's where the sign...
Yeah, and the challenge is, it's not considered a park, but rather a greenway. And so there, there wasn't anything on our books speaking to that, so we wanted to address that, to then say, okay, let's make sure no one's hunting here to the greatest extent possible.
Yeah, we can talk the law, but I believe if it's city-owned property, we can post it. It, that's the hardest part, is post, putting enough postings up to ensure everyone sees this is where you can or cannot hunt.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'm afraid to say anything else.
Well, I'll just say from my part, um, I'm supportive, I'm supportive of, of the current program of the expansion, and, um, I also wanted to compliment those who, especially the, the Rangers for your public, um, communication and outreach around this. So keeping people up to date on the numbers, on the stats. Once we got this rolling, it was really smooth. Um, so, so thank you to you and your team, thanks to Public Safety Director Schmidt for that. Um, as we embark into this new phase, how do you, how do you anticipate, um, that continuation or that, you know, reaching new audiences perhaps, as you expand, as we expand this program into new parks?
Um, so we have been already working on updates, um, based on today's conversation and how everything goes, um, for the Engage PGH page that we set up last year, um, with the frequently asked questions, you know, around the controlled management. Our partners in the media, I'm sure, will happily, uh, talk to us soon about this as well, and, um, just, you know, through words of counsel. And I do think we have, you know, we have been taking some of this discussion out into the parks, into some community meetings, as people ask. Um, so we'll continue to do that with our Safer Together coordinators and the Park Rangers, who really have been the ones behind all this. I'm just the, yeah, the guy at the top, I guess.
Thank you. Um, and then if, and then if we were to make the decision to expand into targeted harvest, what would the communication look like around, around that as well? I think that's, it just feels, it feels to me like that could potentially have a different impact in some communities, so what would that look like?
Yeah, we agree. Um, that's a, a big part of what we've talked about with our PIOs and others, and as I said, on the Engage page, getting that up and running, um, having Tom give, he did actually send a briefing over a little bit about the summary, so we can go out into the community, talk to them at the Zone Safety Council meetings, and at some other, you know, community organization meetings, just to better explain. And obviously, we have some time to do that, since it's May, and that, uh, if we do targeted harvesting, that wouldn't happen till Ju, January-ish. Um, we have some time to get out and talk to the communities about it, what it looks like. It's also why we're only gonna do it in those two parks for now, um, just because those folks kind of already engage with us quite a bit around the archery programs, so we can have that, that same group of folks that had concerns before, have some more discussion with them around what targeted harvesting looks like.
Mm-hmm. And what I also noticed is that there were some kind of citizen ambassadors, almost resident ambassadors, who were very active on, say, you know, Nextdoor or other pages where we might not, as a city, city staff have, always have the bandwidth to be engaging. So I see one of them sitting here in the audience today. So I, I would hope that, you know, um, those who are sort of the, those who can speak, um, fluently in this, you know, in the language that we're speaking here today, can also continue to be, to represent, um, in those forums as well. The one thing that I, I've already spoken to you about, that I'll just say also here, is that the only confusion I received, or the messaging I received that was like from confused people, was that they would enter a park, they would see no hunting, and then they would see notice of this new hunting pro, or this new, you know, um, targeted program is the archery program, and that felt confusing. So to, to the extent that we can make that language really clear, so it's like, we have to post the no hunting, the no hunting is for majority of people, and the, and the archery program is for a very select crew of people, um, that was the only thing that I heard that might still be confusing the people in the, in the newer rad parks we're, we're in. But other than that, um, from my perspective, it was really smooth. So, thank you all. I know that Councilman Wilson had another, um, had further discussion.
Hey, Madam Chair, I just had a question about, uh, the strategy to notify the schools. Last year, when this happened, there was, um, um, some schools who utilized Frick Park that stopped the activities that they would do in the park, uh, during the school day, until they got further information. So I was just wondering...
I can chime in on that. So the first week that the archery program was launched, it was a very quick rollout last year, so, uh, every single three-one-one that was sent, I personally responded to, or I had John respond to it, so that way everyone that had legitimate questions, concerns, whatnot, we responded to them, even the illegitimate, uh, questions and concerns. But in terms of local schools, you know, we are right next door to Environmental Charter School, uh, you know, Community Day School. We have so many schools using the, uh, park every single day, and same with daycares. And I personally sat down, had a meeting with all of them, in, in addition to the sporting, you know, coaches and whatnot, that we're using Frick Park for cross-country and whatnot. So, yeah, we made sure we, we already have a great network and community, you know, discussing ongoing park conversations with them. So we just made sure we had a second meeting private just with them to answer any questions or concern. And everyone that I know of returned to the park within the first five days.
Okay.
So.
And so with the, the new parks that are being added, you've already identified the schools surrounding them and?
Each ranger is stationed in their park, they are the experts in their park, and they are already starting to work with community groups, with local schools and whatnot. They already have those contacts in their communities, so they're going to, you know, take charge in their own park. I know Highland Park had a meeting last week to discuss, you know, the out, the rolling out of the archery program. Uh, Mount Washington, we're working with them right now. So each ranger is really great at, you know, making those connections that are local to their park as well. And as well, we, I oversee to make sure that each park is having, you know, conversations between their constituents and their rangers involving this. So, yeah.
All right, thanks.
We also have a system in place, um, whenever Erica gets a special group in, she lets me know what zones they're in and I notify the hunters, um, that they can't hunt that day if there's a special, special activity or special group in. Um, and that helps limit that interaction.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 497, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you all. Um, it moves us on to Bill 498.
Thank you all.
Bill 498, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements with Freedom in Deed LLC for professional services as a group violence intervention coordinator at a total cost not to exceed four hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars over three years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Council, uh, with discussion, Councilperson?
I'd like to hear a little bit of that, that's all. Anybody coming to the table for this bill?
I am.
You are?
We can have, Assistant Director Jones can come up.
And I'm a Cornell.
And sure, if you'd like. Uh, Reverend Cornell Jones can come up.
You didn't think you were getting off that easy, did you? You just heard me saying you have to teach the kids how to shoot, not each other. Come on. I'm serious about that. So could you introduce yourselves to the public, please?
David A. Jones, Assistant Director of Public Safety for the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you.
Cornell Jones, GVR, group violence intervention coordinator, city of Pittsburgh.
Could you talk a little bit about your successes and, and some of the things that you've seen on who you want to address that, director?
Cornell, take it.
Okay. Um, so since 2017, uh, that was when I came over as group violence intervention coordinator for the city of Pittsburgh. At the time, um, the program was, they were looking at newly launching that program. Um, at the time, we had seven outreach workers. Um, we were at a point where the law enforcement wasn't, you know, there was a huge separation to the point, um, at that time. And, and now we're at a point where there's a level of respect that's there for both, um, the outreach workers and law enforcement, respecting each other and their role. Um, we've tied in every, you know, a lot of community organizations that are now involved in this process. Um, and a lot of different levels of law enforcement are a part of it. We've made it more of a, a village mindset than just, this is just law enforcement arresting people. In fact, I look at this as probably one of the best anti-mass incarceration strategies that we're using because we're, that we're using through the strategy of, um, group violence intervention, we're using every level of, um, you know, implementation of everything from social services to violence interrupters to community people that, uh, will just end, ended up calling me to give me like information so that we could counteract a lot of things that are going on and using those pieces together as we strategically put the group violence intervention strategy together. From that, when I first started in 2017, that was when I was trained by John Jay College, um, through the national initiative, uh, and, you know, have been one of the people that they still look as one of their specialists, um, not just in Pittsburgh, but across the country, where I'll talk to other cities to be able to talk about how they could implement this strategy. Um, you know, uh, I think it's very true to, and honest to say that, uh, the group violence intervention coordinator position is one that has to be respected on both sides of dealing with community and having a respectful level of community. I thank God for my relationships with the community that, um, I've built through the years. And, you know, dealing with law enforcement is a whole other world. And I think because of my, uh, years of working from, you know, working in the prison system and, you know, working and dealing with probation and parole and things such as that, I've been able to pull a lot of the pieces of the puzzle that normally would have had a hard time coming to the table together. And now they see their lane in counteracting, um, street violence and community issues. And there's a lot of things that people, um, that happen around, behind the scenes that people don't understand are happening, um, you know, that are happening to be able to put out a lot of fires. There's a lot of situations where we're trying to pull, um, you know, some key people in to be able to stop them from making some, some bad decisions. And we've been able to make that, those things happen, but people don't really hear about that part. But those are the pieces of the puzzle that we've been able to, um, you know, stop a lot of people from making, you know, retaliating, because with every shooting, there's usually somebody that wants to retaliate. And with those pieces of the puzzle, we've been able to pull a lot of those, um, people in and help redirect them in a lot of different ways. And I think the other part of that is because of my years of working in the, in the, um, prison system, you know, we're able to go to the county jails and different places and have access to the state facilities, to be able to have access to somebody who we tried to help before they even got arrested, but before they come out, we're able to help them to get some resources. So when they come out, they're coming out to some resources and have support.
So.
I also would like to add, um, as amazing as Operation Emani and Reverend Cornell Jones is, he has to do a constant balancing act with our police and our community and our faith base, just to understand what information he can and can't share and to continue to, uh, have credibility in all those spaces. That's a, a major, uh, situation and it's hard, it's a very hard lift. I just want to be able to raise that up as well.
I think he is, I'm going to say this, very, very respected throughout, and I think that's why, because he does keep a lot of those things confidence and confidence.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I see you wear your Central Catholic shirt. I think that was to impress me. My brother was the vice principal at Central for twenty-some years. So I think he wore that to butter me up. Anyway, but, um, but I will say that, um, I do think like there's a lot of kids in the community, and I, I've talked to you about this before, and I, I really wish we would do more things to keep them occupied in areas that there aren't, like recreation centers like in Sheridan. Um, but yesterday I pulled up and I, as soon as the kids see my car, they've come running. I just showed.
I saw the pictures, yeah.
Pictures of, they come running, and it's because they know that I'm going to, you know, do things for the kids. So I fight for the kids. I give them candy.
Yeah.
I buy them dinner and I buy them toys. But if somebody's not doing what's right by the kids, I'm going to go crazy. But I also go down and I say, pick up the trash, pull up your pants, and the kids listen. But they really need someplace, like they love that because they know somebody cares about them and they know I care. But I really feel like there's not a place for the kids in some of these areas, and there should be more of an effort to get the kids, because I see things where people are like, the kids are throwing rocks, they're horrible, they did this, they did that. And they are doing all those, those things, but when you take the time to actually talk to the kids and get to know them and on a different level, a lot of the kids in Sheridan, you know, are in foster care syst, in the foster care system, which in itself needs a whole new ma, I mean, that needs, if anything needs redone, it's fost, the foster care system. I, I feel so strongly about this. And I feel like we take them out of homes, out of the homes that they know and love, even though they may be not the best place for them, and put them in a home that's supposed to be great for them, and yet somehow they're on the street and nobody's feeding them dinner, nobody's taking care of them, but this is supposed to be better than what they just left. So, uh, for me, it's the whole, is, there's just a whole big issue here that, that just needs better addressing, addressing. And I want to thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you, appreciate you.
You are one of the people that I did take in my community who actually, like, we actually had conversations about what you're doing and new things that were going on, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I'd break you over the coals right now. Because, because I do think that there's a lot of violence that is increasing. A lot of people are not calling the police. So we can say violence is down, but the fact is people are not calling the police because they know no one's going to show, or they know nothing's going to happen and there's no place to take the kids. But a safe place to take the kids is what we need here in the city of Pittsburgh. And whether it's a community center that's open, um, and I know we tried a couple of them from a task force that we had, I think it's Phillips, correct me if I'm wrong, Phillips and Ammon that are open. Extended hours still or no? Director?
Uh, Phillips is, and Ammon's has some programs, yeah, up till eight o'clock, I think, but...
So I just think people want people to understand, they are worried about the kids in the community, whether they're your kids or whether you're a victim of something that the kids are doing or whether you're just somebody who just cares. You want the kids to have a safe place to go. And all this money and all this talk about safety and violence and, you know, violence being down and all, and crime being down, when you're seeing kids hurt in the street, it's not okay. It's not okay for us to not come together and try to make some real plans for our kids and their future. So they have a future in the city of Pittsburgh. And so I'm tired of seeing kids hurt and being exploited and used as part of political agendas when I don't see real results for them sometimes. And so I'm just going to say, when we're talking about these dollars, I want to make sure there's some safe place that we're talking about opening north, south, east, west, and central of the city at least. That's the way Pittsburgh public used to look at the city and, and those sectors, where at least those services were available somewhere. Kids should be able to, if you're going to take them off the street, there should be, could you, is there a reason why you can't take the kids off the street and take them to a safe place? Do you know?
Um, I mean legally.
If I'm putting you on the spot, put it to the director, he gets paid. So do you.
True, true. Uh, legally, um, I mean, people, the outreach workers do take young people to places that are safe, to be able to keep them safe, yeah. They did, that does happen.
Where, where do they take them?
Um, I mean.
I'm going to tell you, my, my cousin's a nurse at the county jail, and my other cousin was the police chaplain for the county jail for thirty years. So I know a lot about what goes on in the jail, but I don't know what's going on a lot outside of the jail and where those safe places are. I don't know a lot of it.
Yeah, so we're not, I'm not talking about like, I'm, I'm talking about if there's a situation where there's a big fight or something like that, there've been outreach workers have taken kids back home, you know, places like that. But as far as like the organization, that's something that...
Well, let me tell you, I'm not an outreach worker. I took fifty kids home on Sheridan streets at one o'clock in the morning before. Fifty kids. And out of those fifty kids, maybe six parents were home.
Yeah.
So I got them.
It's a big issue.
It is an issue. And so I'm worried about it because this is what, these are little kids.
What we also have done, uh, is working with our outreach workers, we also have a relationship with our parks and recreation, and they have space there to take, uh, young people there as well. Uh, I'm not sure if you're talking about overnight, we certainly don't do that, but we have places, there are places downtown, there are places that we have relationship with, that when young people need that place, that safe place to go for a meal or for shelter or to be able to work through a situation, we have those places as well.
Here's what I'm going to say, I'm going to fight for these kids. I'm going to really fight hard for these kids. This is a lot of money and that there's no place to take kids north, southeast, west, and central where they're safe. I understand there's not a human center, and I'm disappointed that, that, at the way the county has been responding or hasn't responded, or hasn't put something together by now. Summer is approaching, kids are going to be on the streets, kids are going to be getting shot. And it makes me sick that we, there's some way that we could somehow play some role, a small part in that in keeping them safe and by keeping a center open where the kids are met with a, a hot meal, some social workers maybe, and then when the parents or guardians come to pick them up, they receive help and services. So that's the opportunity to really get some help and services into, into the community for these kids. This is something I've asked for, for two years now, and I just cannot believe that this is not something that we're, when we talk about this kind of money to help kids, that should be part of the conversations too. So I'm just going to say that part. I'm going to vote for it today because Cornell, I do know you do great work and I do know you're trying your best and I do know I've called you myself and like, hey, there's, you know, something, but I'll be honest, I go myself a lot of times. People don't call 911 now, they call Teresa. And honest to God, I mean, it's crazy, the phone calls I'm getting. But I do go down, but I go down because I care about the kids and the kids know it. And I just, I feel like it, it makes me sick that we're not keeping some, at least some center or someplace where they can be safe and say, this is a safe place and we can take you there. You know, we'll have the outreach workers take you there. You don't have to go with the police, it doesn't have to be a bad interaction. It could be a safety net for the kids. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Warwick.
Um, yeah, thanks. Unfortunately, I, I need to go, uh, but I, I do have some questions and maybe we can talk offline. So I, one question is, so I know that the Stop the Violence grant application last year was due in August. Has that money gone out to the community groups?
Yes, so that, um, the grants funds went out, um, over the past couple of weeks. They went through to the awardees for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four grant.
Okay, maybe I missed, I don't, I don't remember getting the list of, of folks who were awarded.
Yeah, that was sent up through council, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay, maybe, maybe that was just an email that I missed. All right, I'll, I'll, I'll look at that. Um, yeah, because I mean, those, and, and as, as, um, Councilwoman Smith said, I mean, summer is approaching, so that needs to go faster, right? That was last summer, and so no grants went out last summer, and the application was August. And I mean, that, when we're talking about having money to, you know, open up a rec center and have food and have just a, a place that's open, that is a lot of the time, as, as you know, community groups, right? Just whatever the local community group is that has a space and they can open it up, but, but that, that costs money, right? Even, you know, even ordering pizzas and whatever, it's, it's money, right? And, and these groups are often small, so if, I, I would definitely like to see those smaller amounts going out fa, I mean, summer is right around the corner, right? School's out on June 12th, right? So, and I know that they'll have that money from that, but it, it feels like we're kind of a year behind on that. And then just quickly, I, I just, so what is the relationship with this and then, and then the work that Reach is doing?
So this contract is for Reverend Jones in his full-time position with the city, um, not full-time, but this is his full-time consulting position with the city. Um, he is the liaison between Reach and the police.
I'm tracking. Okay, okay, I didn't, I didn't understand it. Okay, so this is all part of the, the ongoing work that Reach has been doing in, in the zones and all, okay, okay.
Yes.
That was, that, that was all I had. Thank you. And I do, and I'm going to register yes votes for the rest, and sorry, I'm going to miss my committee.
So noted.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have Councilman Coghill up next for first round.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, well, first, I, I want to say, I would look at, if, if this woman retires like she's
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, well, first, I, I wanna say, I, I would look at, if, if this woman retires, like she's threatening to do, get her on the team, okay? Only she will go up to Mount Washington in a group of about forty bikers and kick them out of there.
I did.
She has a lot of guts, okay? And, uh, yeah, she brings kids home, so, uh, she's just the type of person I feel, you know, that you need on the outreach team.
I'm gonna do it without you, believe me.
She does it for free, so why would we pay her, right? Secondly, you know, I have a, a lot of confidence as to what you do, Cornell. You know, when I called you over a murder up in Brookline, vicious murder, you know, sixteen shots, um, and, uh, you know, I didn't really, you know, when I got, called you, I think at one thirty in the morning, you took that call, and the next day you had outreach people there through Father.
Cabernet.
Cabernet, uh, and, and they were great, you know. There was not much the police could do at that point, it's been, you know, there, it was under investigation, and you know, there was no longer a threat there. But to, um, to have those people on the street, I, I felt that was, uh, very, very productive, put a lot of people's nerves at calm. It's not something that they're accustomed to in that particular neighborhood. And you, Mr. Jones, you know, when we were at Brashere, those high-risk at-risk kids, um, you know, you weren't playing around with them, you weren't there to coddle them, and, you know, when they weren't speaking out, you said, excuse me, I can't hear you. So, you know, I believe that's the type of mentorship, I believe that's the type of direction that a lot of these kids need. And, uh, so I, I really love to see your approach there. It was something that, uh, I, I support. Can't have you everywhere doing that, I know, but, uh, you know, there are Cornell and many other advocates out there doing really what I feel, uh, you know.
Makes my engagements much easier.
Yeah, right, right, right. So, um, so yeah, yeah, I believe in what you do, I, I thank you for what you do, and, um, it's a shame, because you really can't count your statistics as to things that you may have prevented, because you do a lot of work that's not gonna go reported, because if you're preventing something, there's no report. So, uh, but I do believe you're making an impact out there with the youth, and, um, you know, continue to do good work, so, thanks for what you do. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion for first round? Moving on to second round, Councilwoman Cale Smith.
I just, real briefly, I just wanna say, how many Reach people are in my district?
I think we are at four.
So there's, the other day, there was, there's been some issues in Sheridan, and I'm gonna talk to you about.
Okay.
Because, um, they said they only have three, uh, three Reach workers that could respond, and they're already responding to the senior center for stuff with the kids. Well, I mean, the kids at the senior center, I understand what's going on there, but there's, uh, well, they're gonna lose a store in Sheridan if it keeps up down there. And it's always the kids. And I just feel like, I mean, I go, well, you'll have to come down with me, you'll see what I do. But I'll just say, I think that, I think it's manageable, I just think somebody has to spend the time doing it.
We'll talk, for sure.
Thank you, thanks. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I also want to thank you for your work. Reverend Jones, thank you for your, for, for your work, um, and tha- and that of your team as well. I know they do amazing work, so. All those in favor of Bill four ninety-eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation.
The Central Catholic Grant.
That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
New papers, Bill five oh five, resolution authorizing the city of Pittsburgh, the Director of Public Works and Director of Finance to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Duquesne Light Company to provide, install, use, own, operate, maintain, repair, renew, and finally remove one whole anchor located upon city-owned property at no cost to the city.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
She's gone.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
This for Barb's committee.
All those in favor of Bill five oh five, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill five oh six.
Bill five oh six, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, utility coordination, and right-of-way phases of the Penn Ave Phase Two project, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed two million seventy-five thousand dollars, an increase of one hundred thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at eighty percent with no increase to the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill five oh six, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill five oh seven.
Bill five oh seven, resolution amending Resolution Number six eighty, approved October tw- twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, granting unto office partners twenty-three block G one LLC, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, at no cost to the city, a buyer-retention tree pit and a planting area at six twenty-sixth Washington Place in the Third Ward, Sixth Council District of the City of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill five oh seven, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill five oh eight.
Bill five oh eight, resolution, resolution authorizing acceptance by the city of Pittsburgh, the dedication of portions of Kirkpatrick Street at no cost to the city in the Fourth Ward, Sixth Council District of the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill five oh eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I keep talking to Councilman Coghill, he said to me, you, we just voted to remove money from your district, don't worry.
He'll step, teach her for stepping away.
Affirmative recommendation, that moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Charlin.
New papers, Bill four ninety-five, resolution amending Resolution thirty-five of two thousand twenty-three, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement or agreements with the County of Allegheny and partner for work for the shared operation and administration of the two thousand twenty-three Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program by increasing the total not to exceed amount by one million five hundred thirty-six thousand fifty-nine dollars and two cents for the two thousand twenty-four program for a new total not to exceed three million thirty-six thousand fifty-nine dollars and two cents over two years.
Motion to
Question.
Second.
Second with discussion.
Discussion, Councilwoman Cale Smith.
You come to the table. Hi, hi. I just really want them, you to tell everybody where you're from, that's a, no, just kidding. Do you wanna introduce yourselves to the public? Direct, I mean, resident of, what did you say?
I'm sorry. And I'm a resident of Sheridan.
And, um, I'm Chris Barnes, Youth Program Supervisor for the Pittsburgh Partnership.
Jim Brenner, Youth Program Supervisor, too.
Thank you. I see this, uh, pretty big increase. Could you talk a little bit about how the program's going, and how many kids from the city of Pittsburgh are actually employed through the program last year, and how many do you anticipate this year?
Okay, and this is actually a two-year contract, so that's why the, it's, the figure's actually doubled, so it's really the same.
Okay.
But it's just that we wrote it for two years instead of one year.
Okay.
And, uh, Chris actually has numbers.
Trying to avoid coming to that city council again.
So, last year, we served seven hundred and eighteen, uh, children in the city of Pittsburgh.
Okay.
And at this current moment, we have six hundred and nineteen eligible for this program year.
Okay.
And applications close next Friday. So last year for the county, we cl- we served five hundred and thirty-five, and this year we're at four hundred and seventy-five.
Okay. And, um, I do want to thank you all for your work, because this is something our community really, they look forward to. Could you tell me where the sites are, or anything, anything that we, that we should know for the public?
Um, I'll let Chris and Jim discuss that.
If you don't have anything, you could just send it to me. I was just trying to get, make sure.
Yeah, I was gonna say, partner for work, like, chooses all the providers and sites. I know last year they had twenty-two providers and over two hundred and fifty-six work sites.
Could you give us those lists of where you, what they, will they be this year?
Yeah, absolutely, we'll get, we'll get that information.
Okay, thank you.
No, I wasn't. I, I was just.
Okay. And keep getting our Pittsburgh kids employed, okay? That's all, that's what I care about. Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill four ninety-five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation.
Say where she was from.
Thank you. Uh, that moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
New papers, Bill five eighteen, resolution nominating Allegheny River Boulevard a scenic byway.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, brief discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, I just wanna thank the folks from, uh, Scenic Pittsburgh for, uh, reaching out and, and giving me a briefing, um, you know, about the importance of this, and, um, you know, the ability for them to, uh, seek state and federal dollars to support, uh, the revitalization of, uh, the Allegheny River Boulevard. Um, so, uh, I'm happy, you know, to support this, and, and just wanted to just give a shout out to Dave Dimco and, and Scenic Pittsburgh for putting this on my radar, as well as their, uh, patients, and as I'm moving this through the legislative process.
Thank you.
I'd like to get a little update on exactly what, what's included in the scenic byway, what's the benefit, I'd like to get a little bit more information. We have that in Mount Washington, but I just like an update on where it is currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill five eighteen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill, that moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
New papers, Bill four ninety-nine, resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement or agreements providing for the transfer of funds not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars to the city of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase of vehicles for use by the Office of Hu- Office of Community Health and Safety. This expenditure is associated with grant funds that the city will receive from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Wait, could you give us a little update? What is this? What is it again? Could you just tell me?
Buying two vehicles.
Yeah. Uh, I could tell you what I know about it.
Yeah, tell me.
I may.
Councilman Coghill.
Okay, thank you. Um, I believe this original money that they, uh, you know, that this grant called for, um, we wanted to make sure that and just to be more transparent, at least Equipment Leasing Authority Board wanted to make sure that it was, you know, made public and known that we're using some of those funds to purchase, I believe, two vehicles. So, um.
Vehicles for what purpose?
Uh, I, I'm not sure what the vehicles are. It's gotta be, uh, public safety, though. It's gotta be, uh.
Could you just tell me who the vehicles are for and what?
Hmm, yeah, I don't know.
It's a grant, right?
It is a grant, right? Yeah.
It's through a grant. Hi, um, Peter McDevitt, uh, City Council Budget Office. Uh, so, we, we did receive a grant um, for, uh, the OCHS office to get, to purchase vehicles with. This is to approve an agreement between the city and the Equipment Leasing Authority, um, instead of tacking it on additionally to the regular co-op agreement we usually have. This is just to make sure that we're tracking that grant appropriately, just because we wanna make sure we're crossing all of our Ts and dotting all our Is, and, and, and not mixing in with other general funds that the ELA gets from the city.
Okay, good. But, um, I'm just curious, so we're gonna start, they're needing these vehicles for what, is what I'm trying to understand? Even if it's a grant, we're still gonna somehow be ending up maintaining and doing things for vehicles? I'm trying to understand why, because aren't they supposed to be riding with police officers?
That's a good question. The OCHS office would be able to answer that a lot better than I would. Um, but from.
I'll abstain today, but I, I'll probably vote for it next week. I'm, I'm not opposed, I just wanna understand. Okay, thank you.
You, and any further, uh, Councilman Coghill.
I was just gonna add, I don't believe these vehicles are intended for OCHS, uh, faculty. This is for public safety, I believe.
I mean, they're.
I'm not sure what the, you don't know what the vehicles are.
No, I mean, they have.
Okay, bring on Director Paul, uh, Deputy Mayor.
Let me just say, I, I'm gonna say this, you probably could kill me for saying it publicly, but if it weren't for him and Daylin, Pride Fest would probably not be happening this weekend. So thank you for your work on this, both of you.
Uh, Jake Pollock.
So we're trying to figure out, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management.
Okay. We're trying to figure out what, what vehicles are purchased for this, with this.
Yeah, this is, um, uh, the, the resolution authorizes transfer of funds to the ELA for the purpose of purchasing vehicles for OCHS, the Office of Community Health and Safety. These funds were budgeted in the two thousand twenty-four budget, it's to provide the OCHS social workers with vehicles to respond to, uh, situations that they're called to as part of the expanding work of the office. This legislation simply makes it possible for that budgeted purchase to be carried out by making the funds available through the ELA.
So, well, I don't know. So, so these funds will be used for OCHS?
They'll be used by the ELA to purchase.
Purchase for OCHS, so this is not police cruisers, this is not ambulance, okay, understood.
Yeah.
I didn't, that's not the way I understood it, but I'm glad you, you were here to clear it up. Yep.
Right.
Second round, Councilwoman Cale Smith.
I just wanna ask real briefly. So it's my understanding, OCHS is supposed to be riding with police officers. So I'm trying to understand why they need a vehicle separate from the police, the police vehicles.
That is one of several ways in which they respond to incidents. So there are, through our lead program, there are teams of officers and police officers that respond. Um, there are other instances in which they are called in to respond independently, right? So they would, um, they would be called by a police officer who's responding to a scene, determines that, um, handing the response off to a social worker is appropriate, there's no criminal violation. So then they have to get there, the officer can then leave, right? There, there are a wide array of scenarios into which they're called to respond, and they deploy in different ways based on the situation. So it's a com- I mean, their work involves multiple strategies, sometimes involving responding with a police officer, sometimes independently, sometimes being at a fixed location, right? It's all of the above.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill five four ninety-nine, pardon, four ninety-nine, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, that moves us on to Bill five hundred.
Bill five hundred, resolution amending Resolution fifteen and one ninety-eight of two thousand twenty-four, which authorized a cooperation agreement or agreements with the city of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment and accessories, equipment support, infrastructure, and professional services in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four by increasing the authorized amount by five hundred twenty thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty cents from thirteen million nine hundred seventy-five thousand two hundred forty-four dollars to a new, to a new total of fourteen million not, four hundred ninety-five thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty cents for additional items to be added to the plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
What are they for?
Councilwoman Cale Smith.
Yeah, what, I just wonder what vehicles, that's all. Why the increase?
Jake's gotta walk back down the hall.
Don't want that, Jake.
He's gonna walk back down the hall.
No, that's okay. I'll just abstain today and I'll, and get the information. I just wonder what I'm voting for before I vote.
Understood, understood. We'll get you the information. Um, all those in favor of Bill five hu- any further discussion? All those in favor of Bill five hundred, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative, affirmative recommendation, one abstention. Having exhausted our, um, standing committee agenda, we will now move on to final announcements. Next week, council will hold their regular and standing committees meeting on Tuesday, June fourth, and Wednesday, June fifth, at ten AM respectively. Registration ends at nine AM the morning of each meeting. To register to speak at these council meetings, please fill out the sign-up form in its entirety on council meeting webpage. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three three. On Wednesday, June fifth, at twelve thirty PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill two thousand twenty-four dash four sixty-one relative to realigning boundaries, Central Business District, and Crawford Roberts neighborhoods. Speaker registration closes at eleven AM the day of the hearing. Also on the fifth, council will hold two briefings. The first will be on PLI One Stop Portal Development Improvements with sessions at one thirty and two fifteen PM. The second will be, will be a report from the Infrastructure Commission with sessions at three and three thirty PM. Any further from members? Can I get a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.